Okay, we'll get going here.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moment of silence. Roll call.
Counselor Crum, present. Counselor Matthews.
Present.
Counselor Coats, here. Counselor Chamberlain.
Here.
Counselor Allen.
Here.
Counselor Stewart.
Here.
All members are present. We have a call.
Motion to approve the previous meeting's minutes?
Sub move.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Chamberlain and second by Counselor Allen. Counselor Chamberlain?
Yes.
Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Counselor Stewart?
Yes.
Counselor Coats?
Yes.
Counselor Matthews?
Yes.
Counselor Crum?
Yes.
Six yeas, zero nays, motion carries.
Names of individuals wishing to address council. Neil, your name's not on here, but you're up. Neil's the interim chamber commerce director right now.
Yeah, I introduced myself to a few of the folks when I came in. When Debbie Nelson left the chamber in the middle of October, first, middle of October, I got called by the Waseon Chamber in my Swanton Chamber office, where I've been the chamber director for 10 years, to come in and help out for a short period of time till they found a new director. They did advertise for the job. They got 2021 applications in. But when I came in, 1st of November, we had the dues billing that had to go out, the annual dinner coming up, and the Christmas parade. So, and then the board wanted to take time to look at the financials to determine whether or not they could, what they could afford and who they could afford. So they're working on the budget for 2013 right now and have not made a decision on a permanent replacement. They've asked me to stay until after the 1st of the year, at least. And I don't know if the, after the 1st of the year is January 2nd, or if it's sometime in May.[221.73][221.73](Laughter)
They'll let you know, right?
They'll let me know. So we're working on that. They are, the Chamber Board is taking a, I think, a much more proactive approach in trying to work with both business community and with the public sector. And we'd like to develop stronger ties throughout both the business, the community, and the public sector, and find ways that we can cooperate, collaborate, and work together to bring more business, grow business, and so forth in town. So if you have any questions, be glad to answer. I'm in Swanton generally mornings from 8 till noon, and then I get into Waseon about 12:30 or certainly by 1 o'clock. And I'm here from 1 till 5, Monday through Friday, except on the 2nd Thursday of the month when the Chamber Board meets at 8:00 in the morning. So I'm here on that 2nd Thursday from 8 till noon and then to Waseon. Any questions, comments, concerns?
Thanks, Neil. Anybody else? Okay, move on. Committee reports. Park Board.
All right, Park Board. Park Board met on December 11. We're bringing forward, Park Board brought forward two recommendations for tonight. The first recommendation is to close the Homecoming Park Shelter House for the winter to save some money hopefully on the energy costs. And the second recommendation tonight is to move the rear of the park playground equipment to Biddle Park. And Dennis was kind enough to provide us with a picture of Biddle Park. And on the original drawings, you'll see actually titled, "The Playground Area", next to the Big Four Hub is where the Park Board is recommending that the playground equipment go. So it wasn't the original plans. So those are the two recommendations that Park Board will be bringing forward tonight for council's consideration. If there's any questions about the minutes, things I didn't cover, feel free to fire away.
If the shelter house closes for three months, is it going to be closed, absolutely closed? Or if someone comes along and says, "I would like to rent it," would they go ahead and rent it?
It's a great question. My feeling from Dave Murray is that it will be closed. If somebody comes forward, alternatives will be looked into. Ultimately, if there's no other alternatives, I think we'd be inclined to open it up. That's just my feeling. The only, the only regular thing at the Homecoming Park Shelter House was karate class. Karate class has found a new home in one of the school facilities, so. Those are the two recommendations, Nick.
Motion to accept the two recommendations?
Sub move.
Second. Motion made by Counselor Matthews and second by Counselor Coats. Is there any more discussion? Counselor Matthews?
Yes.
Counselor Coats?
Yes.
Counselor Crum?
Yes.
Counselor Chamberlain?
Yes.
Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Counselor Stewart?
Yes.
Six yeas, zero nays, motion carries.
See, there's a streets meeting?
Yeah, streets. We met on December 13 to discuss leaf pickup. Came to council from, I would describe as maybe a certain citizen of Timber Creek, Rick Weaver, I believe was his name. Rick Barnes was his name. Came to us and asked the council to consider the leaves to be picked up in Timber Creek, which has been explained to me as a private community. And a street committee heard from Rick. And after hearing from Rick about the issue of the city going through and picking up leaves through a private community, the street committee decided not to take any action on that issue. So tonight, the street committee is not bringing forward any recommendations in regards to that issue.
All right, thank you. We'll move on to department heads. Steve, you got somebody sitting beside you?
Okay. Fulton County Plan, uh, the new planning director for Fulton County Regional Planning Commission is going to be Dave Wright. He actually started today. He's been following around the county today. Rather interesting. We've had a great time.[503.54][503.54](Laughter) But anyway, he's going to be the new director. He's listed by, was working for the Lima, Alan, Regional Planning Commission.
No, he's working for the City of Lima.
City of Lima.
Community Development Department.
Yeah.
Is there a associate planning there?
Uh, he's got background in public management, code enforcement, zoning, housing. He's got a lot of, lot of experience. And I think he'll fit in really well here in Waseon and also in Fulton County in what he does and everything, so.
So it sounds like we're going to have that often?[543.02][543.02](Laughter)
Probably, you know.
We get that next, yeah.
Anyway, and I also will say, now, this is, this is my last meeting for 6,000 meetings, I think. But I will probably be doing some other things next year. I'm not sure what yet, but I got some ideals. I want to keep them valid within the community, too. That's one of the things I really want to do. Give back to the other side, maybe, for once. But it's been experience. This council here has been a good one to work for over the last 28, 30 years, so. It's been great.
Dave, we welcome you.
Thank you.
Steve, congratulations on your retirement and your future endeavors.
Yep, to be the Sully screeder.[590.74][590.74](Laughter)
Okay, Chief Torbit.
Just to give you an update, we still have two grants that are pending. Both are Volodran and our JAG grant. We have not heard back yet. They start the 1st of the year, so I'm hoping they tell us during the next 13 days whether we've done or not. But as of today, we have not heard back from the Office of Criminal Justice Services on those. We've concluded our civil service test for the dispatcher position. I want to thank Tom Hall and Don Matthews for their assistance with the structured interview portion. We hired Kim Crouch as a full-time dispatcher on that list. We had to have that list certified last Wednesday. Also, we will be working with Owens Community College to partner with, on a training program. For any of you that have been around a lot, may remember the Criminal Justice Training and Education Center out of Toledo used to have a program where they would, you could pay a membership fee and then get your training, all-inclusive, regardless of how many officers that you were sending. We've looked at it. Most of the departments are going to go in with this because it's, for our size of department, it's going to cost us about $700 a year for training. We can get up to $200 of training per officer a year for that. It's just, we can't get that. We can't do it here for that cost. So we're really excited about that and bring some top-notch training to our officers and to the rest of the departments in the county as well.
Thank you. Tom?
Some of you may know, but I'll give you an update. The house we purchased at 765 Lynnfoot, that is in our possession, and they're in the process of Public Works is cleaning out one of the buildings that they're going to utilize. And also 401 Fulton Street is getting closed. We won't be doing any demo on those until after the fire department loses them for some training. Possibly Chief, but he might have some of the officers do some of their training in there, and then it'll be out the 1st of the year before we get those down. The new building code takes effect January 1. We're going to send notices out to our registered contractors certifying those changes. There are a few things in the energy code, and some of the actual structural aspects that they'll have to start doing. We signed the permit, which we should check, but off today for the one and only new house in town this year. So, came in late, but if we got one, we didn't get shut out. But I think we'll have some. There's definitely one of the older developments that a new person's looking to buy, and if so, we'll probably get 27 units built next year right away, so.
Cool.
That's what we've been doing.
All right. Dennis?
Emerald Ashmore Grant, closed. Biddle Park Grant, closed. Water Rehabilitation Plant Project, final pay estimate sent in for processing. Keith alluded to the civil service process. I've got two dogs in that bike, position at the water treatment plant and one at the Public Works Department. Our exams are complete. Our lists for those two positions were certified at the same civil service meeting that Keith spoke about. In our interviews, for the water plants, start tomorrow, tomorrow on Wednesday, and Public Works will be done on Thursday. So we'll probably have a recommendation for those positions by the end of the week, hopefully. We have a need to have a utility committee meeting. This is not something we need to do post haste, but maybe sometime mid-January regarding a project out near the turnpike where our utilities may be of service to help with an expansion and job creation. I, too, would like to thank Steve for his 30-plus years of service to Fulton County and wish everyone a Merry Christmas.
Thank you. John, are you as cheery?
I gave everybody a present a little earlier. I gave you the first draft of the budget that I certainly hope we can improve next Friday morning. Along with finalizing that, putting those pieces together, I am putting together a resolution to amend an ordinance to take care of this year's budget and bring it down into compliance. I will have that ready also for Friday morning. So we'll finish this year and hopefully get a good start on next year. That's it, Mayor.
Thanks, John. Tom?
Well, I put coal in your stockings by way of 12 pieces of legislation for tonight's consideration. Been working, three of those have to do with the union contracts. Been working with Chief Torbit on finalizing the language in those agreements and with Larry Farley from the union. And then appreciate John's help on those as well. And then John's helped me with respect to the three pieces of legislation, men in the code for the non-union employee pay and benefits. Think those are three ordinances. Then we've got a smattering of some other ones. But that consumed most of my time this past week or so, and then also working with Tom and getting that 765 West Lynnfoot Street put to bed. And I think I put the recorded deed on Meg's pile of stuff there. So for the record, if you're looking for the official recorded deed, I gave it to Meg. That's all. I'll be happy to answer any questions folks might have on the legislation as we get to it early on.
Okay. Thank you. We'll move on to first reading legislation. Ordinance 2012-9, amending Section 148.11 and 148.12 of the codified ordinance for the City of Waseon to declare an emergency. Waging compensation plan.
Make a motion to suspend the rules and declare an emergency.
Second. Motion made by Counselor Chamberlain and second by Counselor Crum. Is there any discussion? Counselor Chamberlain?
Yes.
Counselor Crum?
Yes.
Counselor Matthews?
Yes.
Counselor Coats?
Yes.
Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Counselor Stewart?
Yes.
Six yeas, zero nays, motion carries.
Final passage.
Sorry.
Motion made by Counselor Matthews and second by Counselor Stewart. Counselor, oh, was it correct? Oh, excuse me. I kind of have my eyes down. Motion made by Counselor Allen and second by Counselor Stewart.
No, no.
No? Okay.[1026.14][1026.14](Laughter) I crossed out.
One more time.
I will find the passage. I'm Don Matthews.[1034.54][1034.54](Laughter) I had the final passage. This is the rest of council here.
She erased again.
Okay. Motion made by Counselor Allen.
No, no.
Okay.
Motion to bid on.
Okay.
Second by Fred.
Okay. Counselor Crum?
Yes.
Counselor Matthews?
Yes.
Counselor Coats?
Yes.
Counselor Chamberlain?
Yes.
Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Counselor Stewart?
Yes.
Six yeas, zero nays, ordinance 2012-9 passes on emergency and is now in effect.
We've got two more to go.
They won't take them.
Go along, we're up, you guys.
Even Queens have bad days.
Ordinance 2012-10, amending Section 147.03 of the codified ordinances of the City of Waseon to declare an emergency. Sick leaf paint benefit provisions.
I make a motion to suspend the rules, declare an emergency.
Motion made by Counselor Allen and second by Counselor Stewart. Is there any discussion? Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Counselor Stewart?
Yes.
Counselor Chamberlain?
Yes.
Counselor Coats?
Yes.
Counselor Matthews?
Yes.
Counselor Crum?
Yes.
Six yeas, zero nays, motion carries.
Final passage.
Second. Motion made by Counselor Chamberlain and second by Counselor Coats. Counselor Chamberlain?
Yes.
Counselor Coats?
Yes.
Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Counselor Stewart?
Yes.
Counselor Matthews?
Yes.
Counselor Crum?
Yes.
Six yeas, zero nays, ordinance 2012-10 passes on emergency and is now in effect.
Ordinance 2012-11, amending Section 147.08 of the codified ordinances of the City of Waseon to declare an emergency. Health insurance benefit provisions.
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Crum and second by Counselor Matthews. Is there any discussion? Counselor Crum?
Yes.
Counselor Matthews?
Yes.
Counselor Coats?
Yes.
Counselor Chamberlain?
Yes.
Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Counselor Stewart?
Yes.
Six yeas, zero nays, motion carries.
Final passage.
Second. Motion made by Counselor Chamberlain and second by Counselor Coats. Counselor Chamberlain?
Yes.
Counselor Coats?
Yes.
Counselor Matthews?
Yes.
Counselor Crum?
Yes.
Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Counselor Stewart?
Yes.
Six yeas, zero nays, ordinance 2012-11 passes on emergency and is now in effect.
Ordinance 2012-12, amending ordinance 2012-1, providing for the city law director, assistant law directors, setting a rate of compensation to declare an emergency.
Motion to suspend.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Allen and second by Counselor Stewart. Is there any discussion? Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Counselor Stewart?
Yes.
Counselor Chamberlain?
Yes.
Counselor Coats?
Yes.
Counselor Matthews?
Yes.
Counselor Crum?
Yes.
Six yeas, zero nays, motion carries.
Final passage.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Coats and second by Counselor Chamberlain. Counselor Coats?
Yes.
Counselor Chamberlain?
Yes.
Counselor Matthews?
Yes.
Counselor Crum?
Yes.
Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Counselor Stewart?
Yes.
Six yeas, zero nays, ordinance 2012-12 passes on emergency and is now in effect.
Resolution 2012-30, authorizing the mayor to enter into agreement with Ohio Patrolman's Benelva Association, Patrolman's Officers Union, declare an emergency.
Motion to suspend the rules and declare an emergency.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Coats and second by Counselor Chamberlain. Is there any discussion? Counselor Coats?
Yes.
Counselor Chamberlain?
Yes.
Counselor Matthews?
Yes.
Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Counselor Stewart?
Yes.
Six yeas, zero nays, motion carries.
Final passage. Sorry.
Joe Fred.
Joe. That's Fred. Motion made by Counselor Stewart and second by Counselor Allen. Counselor Stewart?
Yes.
Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Counselor Chamberlain?
Yes.
Counselor Coats?
Yes.
Counselor Matthews?
Yes.
Counselor Crum?
Yes.
Six yeas, zero nays, resolution 2012-30 passes on an emergency and is now in effect.
Resolution 2012-31, authorizing the mayor to enter into agreement with Ohio Patrolman's Benelva Association, Command Officers Union, and declare an emergency.
Sub move.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Crum and second by Counselor Matthews. Is there any discussion? Counselor Crum?
Yes.
Counselor Matthews?
Yes.
Counselor Coats?
Yes.
Counselor Chamberlain?
Yes.
Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Counselor Stewart?
Yes.
Six yeas, zero nays, motion carries.
Final passage.
Second. Motion made by Counselor Chamberlain and second by Counselor Coats. Counselor Chamberlain?
Yes.
Counselor Coats?
Yes.
Counselor Matthews?
Yes.
Counselor Crum?
Yes.
Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Counselor Stewart?
Yes.
Six yeas, zero nays, resolution 2012-31 passes on emergency and is now in effect.
Resolution 2012-32, authorizing the mayor to enter into agreement with the Ohio Patrolman's Benelva Association Records Technicians and Full-Time Dispatchers Union and declare an emergency.
Sub move.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Matthews and second by Counselor Crum. Is there any discussion? Counselor Matthews?
Yes.
Counselor Crum?
Yes.
Counselor Coats?
Yes.
Counselor Chamberlain?
Yes.
Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Counselor Stewart? Six yeas, zero nays, motion carries.
Final passage.
Second.
Sorry, Joe. Joe has it.
Motion made by Counselor Allen and second by Counselor Stewart. Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Counselor Stewart?
Yes.
Counselor Chamberlain?
Yes.
Counselor Coats?
Yes.
Counselor Matthews?
Yes.
Counselor Crum?
Yes.
Six yeas, zero nays, resolution 2012-32 passes on emergency and is now in effect.
Resolution 2012-33, authorizing the mayor to enter into agreement with Medical Mutual for health insurance coverage and declare an emergency.
Sub move.
Second. Motion made by Counselor Crum and second by Counselor Coats. Is there any discussion? Counselor Crum?
Yes.
Counselor Coats?
Yes.
Counselor Matthews?
Yes.
Counselor Chamberlain?
Yes.
Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Counselor Stewart?
Yes.
Six yeas, zero nays, motion carries.
Final passage.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Chamberlain and second by Counselor Matthews. Counselor Chamberlain?
Yes.
Counselor Matthews?
Yes.
Counselor Crum?
Yes.
Counselor Coats?
Yes.
Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Counselor Stewart?
Yes.
Six yeas, zero nays, resolution 2012-33 passes on emergency and is now in effect.
Thanks, Tom.
Okay. Onto second reading of legislation. Resolution 2012-29, authorizing the mayor to enter into a city-county dog services contract with the Board of Commissioners of Fulton County.
Second reading. Sorry.
Motion made by Counselor Chamberlain and second by Counselor Allen. Is there any discussion? Counselor Chamberlain?
Yes.
Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Counselor Stewart?
Yes.
Counselor Coats?
Yes.
Counselor Matthews?
Yes.
Counselor Crum?
Yes.
Six yeas, zero nays, resolution 2012-29 passes on second reading.
Third reading of legislation. Resolution 2012-25, excuse me, authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Fulton County for bail bondsman for Fulton County Court, Western District, and declare an emergency.
Sub move.
Second. Motion made by Counselor Crum and second by Counselor Coats. Is there any discussion? Counselor Crum?
Yes.
Counselor Coats?
Yes.
Counselor Matthews?
Yes.
Counselor Chamberlain?
Yes.
Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Counselor Stewart?
Yes.
Six yeas, zero nays, motion carries.
Final passage.
Sorry.
Motion made by Counselor Matthews and second by Counselor Allen. Counselor Matthews?
Yes.
Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Counselor Crum?
Yes.
Counselor Coats?
Yes.
Counselor Chamberlain?
Yes.
Counselor Stewart?
Yes.
Six yeas, zero nays, resolution 2012-25 passes on emergency.
Resolution 2012-27, authorizing the mayor to issue a request for qualifications for an engineer.
Third reading.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Chamberlain and second by Counselor Crum. Is there any discussion? Counselor Chamberlain?
Yes.
Counselor Crum?
Yes.
Counselor Matthews?
Yes.
Counselor Coats?
Yes.
Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Counselor Stewart?
Yes.
Six yeas, zero nays, resolution 2012-27 passes on third reading and will be in effect in 30 days.
Resolution 2012-28, authorizing the mayor to enter into a lease and write a first refusal to purchase the property located at 540 West Lynnfoot Street, declare an emergency.
Sub move.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Crum and second by Counselor Matthews. Is there any discussion? Counselor Crum?
Yes.
Counselor Matthews?
Yes.
Counselor Coats?
Yes.
Counselor Chamberlain?
Yes.
Counselor Chamberlain?
Yes.
Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Counselor Sturz?
Yes.
Six eight zero nays, motion carries.
Final passage.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Sturz and second by Counselor Coast. Counselor Sturz?
Yes.
Counselor Coast?
Yes.
Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Counselor Chamberlain?
Yes.
Counselor Matthews?
Yes.
Counselor Crum?
Yes.
Six eight zero nays, resolution 2012-28 passes on emergency and is now in effect.
You had your workout, buddy. And you see, they really tried helping you, too, didn't you?
Yeah, yeah, I see that.
Any suggestions, anybody?
I was wondering regarding the special council meeting that we have scheduled for Friday morning, if it would suit everybody just as well to do it at about 4:30 Thursday afternoon? Any impressions?
Good for me.
It shouldn't take very long, right? A couple of things to deal with.
There's a time on my schedule for 4:30. If you don't mind if I come early.
You don't mind if I come in sweats?
Before we move on, this is the last meeting of the year. I'd like to wish everybody a Merry Christmas. Years went by, it's amazing where time goes. I'm going to make a motion to approve the bills that's presented.
Some move.
Sorry.
Motion made by Counselor Chamberlain and second by Counselor Crum. Counselor Chamberlain?
Yes.
Counselor Crum?
Yes.
Counselor Matthews?
Yes.
Counselor Coast?
Yes.
Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Counselor Sturz?
Yes.
Six eight zero nays, motion carries.
And after adjournment, I'd like to have a motion to go into executive session pertaining personnel. Does that motion have been done?
Yeah, I'm looking for going up. Directly.
We got. Before you adjourn. Now. I'll make a motion to go into executive session.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Sturz and second by Counselor Crum. Counselor Sturz?
Yes.
Counselor Crum?
Yes.
Counselor Matthews?
Yes.
Counselor Coast?
Yes.
Counselor Chamberlain?
Yes.
Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Six eight zero nays, motion carries.